Come to order please. Dr. Deegan, would you please do some more pledge please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steady.
Do you call the roll please?
Yes.
Ms. Ronioe?
Here.
Ms. John?
Here.
Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Dr. Bridges?
Here.
Mr. Jester?
Here.
Colonel Waters.
Do we have any special guests tonight, Dr. Deegan?
Yes, tonight we do have a special guest and I am going to turn this section over to Mr. Rick Owens, our MacArthur High School principal.
Thank you, Dr. Deegan. It is a pleasure and an honor to introduce one of our outstanding seniors at MacArthur High School, Mr. Jornell Wiggum. He has won a prize in the state competition, oratorical competition. And before we get started, we now want to introduce his first commander, Mark Barstow. He's going to take a break from the unit program and then will let Jornell direct the office.
I want to thank you for honoring Jornell tonight and listening to him. He's an outstanding young man. A little bit about the program. The Oratorical Program is a national American Legion program. It's a speech scholarship, speech contest for juniors and senior high school students. Jornell has done well. My post sponsored him, Post 306 in Fletcher. We're a little out of your area, but we recruit through the three high schools in Lawton, the towns of Apache, Cement, Sorrel, Staling, Fletcher, and Elgin. And this young man won our local contests at both posts and district and then went on to win state oratorical speech contest. And then apparently, or not apparently, did. He was the Oklahoma State contestant for the national speech contest in Indianapolis, which he just returned. This is a great program that recognizes talent. It helps to educate and to promote these young men. And we're proud to be part of it. And I'd like to just take just 30 seconds to introduce some of my people who made this happen. The very first one, of course, is his mother and father. And the teachers that he had. And on my post level, Lynn Silva is our oratorical chairman, has been there for the last couple of years and works with these students regularly. He accompanied Jornell to national this year. And then my other people, I have LaRue Hill and Rudy Hightower that are on our board there. So without further ado, I want to thank you and Jornell. Good evening.
Good evening. In 1990, there was a story in a Dear Abby newspaper column about a young man preparing to graduate from college. In it, he reminded his father of a beautiful sports car at the local dealership that he wanted as a graduation gift. The morning of his graduation, his father called him into his study. He told him how proud he was to have such a fine young son and that he loved him very much. He then handed him a wrapped gift box. Curious, yet somewhat disappointed, he opened the box only to find a Bible. In outrage, he yelled at his father, "With all the money you have, you buy me a Bible?" He threw the book onto the desk and stormed out of the house. Many years passed and the young man became a successful businessman with a wonderful home and family. But at some point, he realized that his father had become a very old man and thought he should go to him. They hadn't seen each other since the day of the graduation. But before arrangements could be made, he was informed that his father had passed away and held all of his possessions to his son. He immediately departed to handle his father's affairs. Upon entering his father's house, heavy sadness and regret filled his heart. Soaring through his father's important papers, he found the Bible just as he had left it years before. With tears in his eyes, he opened the book and began to turn the pages. And suddenly, a car key dropped out of an envelope taped to the back of the Bible. On the tag was the dealership's name, the date of his graduation, and three words, "Paid in full." How often do we miss God's greatest blessings simply because they're not packaged as we expected? I believe that as a nation, we are neglecting the greatest gift that the founders of our country have ever given to us, the United States Constitution. For many of us, this gift has remained on the desk for over 238 years, waiting for us to discover that our founding fathers have given us a revolutionary form of government that limits the power of the central government and empowers the people to truly govern themselves. Composed of seven articles and 27 amendments, it's almost hard to believe that it effectively governs over 314 million Americans today. Especially when you consider the extreme amount of pressure and circumstances under which it was created, it is nothing short of a modern miracle. Under America's first form of government, the Articles of Federation, proved to be too weak to regulate commerce or settle disputes between states. More importantly, the treasury was nearly empty, inflation was through the roof, and there were no means to effectively support a military. The new constitution directly addressed each and every one of these issues. The first three articles set out the scope and separation of power between the judicial, executive, and legislative branches. Article four detailed items such as state relations and state admittance into the Union. Article five covered amendment proposals and ratifications. Article six and seven covered debt, oaths of office, treaties, and ratifications. The body of our constitution is joined by 27 amendments, many of which guarantee our own personal freedoms. Yet, no discussion on the United States Constitution would be complete without first acknowledging the Bill of Rights. Anti-federalists demanded for a more concise and explicit constitution that laid out for everyone the rights of the people and the limitations on the government. Richard Henry Lee, a Virginia statesman, despised the notion of a constitution that lacked the proper provisions to guarantee what he considered to be those essential rights of mankind without which liberty cannot exist. The first amendments immediately set the tone for protection of individual freedoms such as the freedom of speech, press, religion, the right to be armed, protection against unlawful search and seizures. Subsequent amendments after the Bill of Rights covered various topics, many of historical significance, and voting. Today, we live in a country where the right to vote is so taken granted and appreciated that it's embarrassing to call ourselves self-governing. Other statistics compiled by the Senate of American electorate indicate that only 58 percent of literate citizens participated in the 2012 presidential election. The remaining 40 percent that didn't vote equate to nearly 93 mean Americans, I presume, just did not get the mo. The struggle to obtain the right to vote through the fourth, fifteenth, nineteenth, as well as the fourth and 26th amendments, capital of darkest and brightest moment in our history, captured Americans petitioning their government, intending to make what the constitution was intended for in the first place, to create a more perfect union. Our constitution was designed for engagement and participation amongst its citizens, and my generation has got some stuff to do. According to the National Assessment of Edinal Progress, 2011, only one, yes, one, in our 10 high schoolers demonstrated acceptable knowledge among the texts andses of the judicial, executive, and legislative judges. It's clear that many in my generation are unaware of the great power we will soon responsibility for. I believe that in order to serve our great republic and promote the principles of our constitution, we must go back to and protect the principles of our constitution, we must regain who we are as Americans. Former Supreme Court Justice David Sauer said in his 2009 time speech that who we are as Americans is being lost. What is needed is the restoration of identity of the American people. In order to restore who we are, we must go back to our constitution and learn our civic duties and rights. A second recommendation by our generation to preserve our constitution is to commit ourselves and energy to reservations through our actions as well as words. We need to become active in our schools and churches. Once we near the age of 18, parents and grandparents should take us to first town meetings. Once returning, first act of adulthood should be registering a vote. And if you're a male, take it to the next level by registering for elective service. Finally, my generation, with yours, must commend our efforts to immigrate your vast knowledge and understanding of the institution with our tech savvy skills to promote awareness, education, and participation. Did you know that you can track the steps of a bill as through Congress? Once alerted of the steps of a bill, we can all email our local and congressional leaders and receive feedback in hours, if not minutes. Do you know where your representatives stand on issues such as social security, national security, and immigration? Call them on Twitter and see if their priorities are the same as yours. Awareness, participation, and education will be my generation's way of preserving our constitution. Look beyond packaging of what critics see, poor old pages of parchment paper with some updated rules on. See the constitution for the true gift it really is. A free people's government that endured two world wars, a civil war, the Great Depression, the Vietnam War, 9/11, and through it all, we still managed to put first name on the moon less than 200 years. That's not just an American achievement, a human achievement. Therefore, to neglect and in the freedoms gained while adopting our constitution is not only- ...commit treason against ourselves, but the hopes of the world. Thank you.
Jornell, thank you very much. That was a very moving speech. Appreciate it. I appreciate the content also. Thank you. End of sir.
Jornell, that was amazing. And I want you to know that you all did come for Jornell. You're one of the staff at the board meeting, as things it'll be. We understand you need to step out and we wish you a wonderful evening.
Jornell, we'll keep it on. Thank you.
Okay. And that's our special guest?
Special guest.
Your art techs report?
I have an art tech report this week, but on the 17th, the tech will be here for a full update on where we are going and some projected moving day.
Okay. Departmental report?
The one departmental report and it's been our standing departmental report, reading the subject update and further report with Ms. DeHart, Executive Period of Elementary Education, Chair, where we are running out of agency.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening.
Right along with what the young Jeff said, keeping up with our Senate bills and our bills, I wanted to give you, I think you have it out here with the House date. Right now, we've all been talking sufficiency act, know that there's some big motions, we know that there's controversy and some pretty heated discussions. There are three of the bills that are still alive to amend that or to make changes out. And if you look at Senate Bill 138, that modifies laws exemption for lit English efficiency student. It makes the ELL admissions more flexible for the district. It did pass the Senate floor, 44 to 0, and it was be heard by the House Commons today as a matter of fact. And then on House Bill 25, that models, we'll ensure here, the mandatory third retention required by providing that a team consisting of students, guardians, a third grade teacher, fourth grader, the school principal, and certified reading specialist would all come together with the retention promotion of a student. And would take House Bill 2625, the third grade retention decisions out of state hands and placed at the direction of district, which I think that's what the majority of the people are wanting. That did pass the House with a vote of 86 to 4 and passed the Senate Commission Committee on March 30th and will soon be eligible for vote at the fourth Senate. And the last one that's still alive and could be, Senate Bill 179, that removes the third grade efficiency retention requirements for students on IP or special education since if they've least years of intensive reading remediation. The negative impact is if parents or schools see that that's a possibility they're worried about, over identifying to education student. Now, we are, Lawton Public School already at a very high number, that'd be a negative impact. This is suspended by the Senate on March 43 and was heard at the House of Education Committee today as well. Piece of information that I wanted to give, just an update, kind of where we are right now, taking our third benchmark test. So what I did is I third benchmark test for our third graders in REIT. And you can see on that first chart there that we, 135 who scored advanced or proficient. There's 299 who admitted knowledge, 149 who were unsatisfactory. And of course, that's the number we get about these unsatisfactory, what would cost for a retention for the same. If you look at this chart, I guess it's a four last year at this time. And so, I just changed percentages there. The same thing, at 149, that'd be 13 points percent of our students this year who were unsatisfied at this point, or is 4.6. The next chart is going to show using percentage. We found over the years that our students scored on the CRT test than they do on the mark, because the benchmarks are a little bit harder and by the get to CRTs, they go, "That was easy." You know, that was a lot easier. And so, if you have 14%, 13% previous page, look at how they scored with the CRT. It's usually somewhere, you see a 10%, but then you 7% factoring in 8.9. We do a little this year because I'm sure someone has mentioned, we no longer have all the OMAP tests for IEP students this year. We're a little bit about that. I just wanted to give you a snapshot now after our third test of where our students and T-30 predicting, I think, doesn't be able to make it, I think right on the bubble, but I have these two and we're still working just as best we can right at testing time. I just wanted to give where we are. Any questions?
We actually have a lot of interesting information.
We do. We do. Very proud of them.
Yeah, we are. Quite. And we'll help people along.
All right, we're gonna get there.
That's right. Thanks.
Under my court, we itemize consideration and action, consideration resolution determining the measure and setting a date, timing for the sale of the $3 million general obligation and purpose bonds of the school district. And for that of that sale, I'd like to suggest April 27 noon, bids being to be opened by 11:00 AM.
Turn them over.
I move approval. Second.
Call the roll please.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Ms. Ronioe?
Yes.
Item B, we have consideration concerning following fiscal year 14, some ramps in budgets. We have the sedumi, the summer maintenance, the sufficiency in the summer programs. Not sure if it's the board to vote on equally or all under item B.
I don't have a preference.
I can move all of all. Second.
Call the roll please.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Ms. Ronioe?
And do we have anything that you pulled from the-
Oh, I'm gonna draw. But I will consider action concerning the proposed physical fees and athletes.
Ah, yes, I remember reading that.
And we do have Mr. Mike Moore, athletic, district athletic, if you have any questions.
Okay. Do we have any questions in this?
Yeah, just one. The only thing is that I think plan, I think, you know, it's needed and I know the shortages that are there. What you have on here, it says do not reflect expenses of the physical process. Is there any number in that about-
Not really, because the way we're doing physicals, we've been at the school's meetings there have been really expensive. Our doctor very good about not charging us several years, although contractually, if they do, we pay them. So as long as we continue under leadership, not charge, don't have that. We're anticipating another planned physicals and there could be some expense with respect to more our nurses and doctors, it's gonna be all day deal. And we could expense it with maybe, since it's maybe on a Saturday, other than the very small fees.
This, physicals for everybody.
OSSA allows us, first of May, to give physicals, will cover entire coming school year. Under our present, we use about 21 innings to do our physicals. And that I'm trying to figure is that we would use two sessions and have them all two Saturdays for the entire school year.
I know it's still more economical to do it this way than to go private practice or EM clinic. Any different sets of numbers, really, what did you, or what did you think that you'd be getting?
Well, I didn't have a, needed to reach a certain amount. The priority is our three athletic trainers, my David, Mike, and Scott, did outstanding job with our athletes. But anything where medical attached is more expensive. Cost of them taking athletes has gone, so I felt like anything that I could make, physical fees, that would alleviate some of that on them, help them be able to buy the necessary supplies and calculators and heat packs instead, would be to our athletes. So no projected number to make something that would help them.
Any question? I don't mean that. Any data? The last one, I know that it says it covers basically that no one will be turned down based on, you know, how, is that through the coaching staff or through the principal that kind of knows their-
Well, the way we're planning on doing is, I'm a unique thinker, I've copied, a friend of mine is in Tulsa, which has graphics, is what we have. And so what they do, they had a $10 fee, they use their, they have free and reduced lunch if you're on NESTA5, special nurse is free. And it has someone who, a coach, building coordinator, apprentice, this family just cannot afford that. We just kind of quote, "Sorship them, we'll find a way to make it happen."
Move for second. Affirmation. Take three.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Ms. Ronioe?
Yes.
I'm gonna give addition to it, to more. More was recently published in a national magazine. What's an athletic?
Athletic magazine.
Athletic magazine. It was published in a national magazine. Very good writer. Try to get you a link or a copy to that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Representing our district.
Great job. Okay. Do we have anything that needs to pull from the agenda?
Madam President, by regard to the minute where I sixth, 2004 Board meeting, the second month on patient night agenda, that's not properly placed on the agenda consideration then, so we need to remove that motion, that action from the minute. We need a motion to-
Remove it.
Remove it.
Do I make a motion? Or one? Nineteen?
Make the nineteen motion on 19.
Okay. Questioner, to approve that section, minutes, the February 6 minutes.
Okay.
Call the roll please.
Ms. Jester?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Ms. Ronioe?
Yes.
Now do we, to approve the-
Make a motion to approve balance the remainder of the minutes for that date.
Second. Call the roll please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Ms. Jester?
Yes.
Yes. And executive session this evening?
Yes, we do.
Do I hear permission to execute a session? For approval.
I second.
Call the roll.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Ms. Ronioe?
This is the executive, a statement of executive, the session minutes. The Board of Education went into exec-
Go back in.
Oh, excuse me, yes. Can we vote to go back into the session, please?
I make a motion that we return from executive session.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Ms. Ronioe?
Here.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Okay. Now we have some, now I can leave my executive session minutes. The Board of Education went into executive session at 5:20 PM. Members present were Don Ronioe, president, Helena John, vice president, Eric Sherrill, member, Dr. Lori Bridges, member, Kent Jester, member, and Colonel Glenn Waters, ex officio member, was absent. Items discussed included authorized by 25 OS Section 307B1 of the Oklahoma Meeting Act, the employing, promoting, or receiving resignations of individual certified, and support salaried personnel listed on pages 93 through 95 so the board can return to open session and vote to take action on the personnel transactions listed on the pages of the agenda. The evaluation and the contract of Superintendent Dr. Deegan. During the executive session, the board discussed these items and no other items and no action was taken. The board returned to open session at 7:05 PM. This constitutes the minutes of the executive session. I believe we have a housekeeping issue.
I have to amend my motion to approve only the minutes of the consent agenda to approving the full consent agenda.
And I second. Do you call the roll please?
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. Ronioe?
Yes. Okay. Dr. Deegan, your personnel report?
Under Superintendent's personnel report, I have item A, vote to approve the employing, promoting, discipline, and receiving resignation of individual certified and support salaried personnel listed on pages 93 through 95, which includes the addendum.
Okay. The addendum for- For middle school?
No, the addendum for, the personnel addendum.
Oh, the personnel addendum. Okay. Are we gonna cover that under separate, separate business?
No, it's under the personnel report.
Okay. All righty.
Is there clarification? All of me, this then and here is putting this whole thing as a whole?
Yes, the item, item eight was already handled in consent agenda. Item 13, the addendum in item 13 is handled now. We've already handled item-
We've already handled Item 8. Item 13, however, is, is being handled now.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Correct, check, have me, have me check. Yes, to include the?
To include the personnel, or vote to include the personnel item on the addendum.
Yes. I want to pull the assignment for the Eisenhower Football Coach from that consideration as a whole.
So we need to just vote on the remainder of the personnel. Call the roll, please.
So now we have to approve the rest of it, correct?
Yes. That's what we're doing. I make a motion to approve the remaining part of the certified personnel report. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Sharon?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Ms. Ronioe?
Yes.
Okay, now we want to vote on the football coach for Eisenhower High School.
I guess you gotta make a motion, I guess.
I make a motion that we approve the recommendation of Dr. Deegan for the position of Eisenhower High School head football coach.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. John?
No.
Mr. Sharon?
No.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. Ronioe?
No.
Okay. Item B, consideration and action, if any, concerning the evaluation of contract to Superintendent Deegan.
I'd like to make a motion that we extend Dr. Deegan's contract to June 30 of 2016.
Yeah, I second.
Call the roll, please.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Sharon?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Ms. Ronioe?
Yes.
Next item I'll report.
Okay. We have any new business?
I have no new business that I'm aware of.
Do we have any new board?
Excuse me?
I don't know, they're wondering on that, huh?
Oh, okay. Next regular board meeting is Tuesday, April 17. Does she make her auditorium? Do we have any other board meetings we need to schedule?
No, we, just a reminder, we did put one on the 22nd at noon.
Yes. Have any board announcements? Consider immersion, K. Jer.
So moved.
Second.
We're adjourned. Thank you.
Call the roll. We gotta call the roll. Let's call the roll. Mr. Sharon?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Ms. Ronioe?
Yes.